It is March 24th. It is 6:30 PM. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop preserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30, and I am calling this meeting to order.
...by the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It's 6:30.
We okay, Colin? Okay. We're not going to have to hear that all night, are we?
No.
Okay. All right. So, for the public, we are, you see us following the social distance guidelines, and we have with our go-to meeting, we have Councilmember Jackson and Councilmember Peterson that are utilizing technology. I want to extend to them a very special thanks. They both agreed to do this. They are helping us test out the technology. We don't know what our April meetings are going to be like. We may all, we may be having a virtual meeting when April comes around, but they are helping us test the technology. They've been on and off with us during the day, and I just want to extend both of them a special thank you for agreeing to do that.
Thank you.
So, with that, we are going to move on to our next item, which if everyone will please rise, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
And Council, and those in the audience, if you will remain standing, Councilmember Ennis has graciously agreed to lead us in our invocation tonight. Councilmember Ennis?
(inaudible) Tonight, we pray for our great country, the great state of Texas, and for the city of Bastrop. As we walk together during each moment of the current crisis that we are experiencing, teach us to place our worries and doubts in your hands. We pray for this council, and ask that you would graciously grant us wisdom to govern the conflicting interests and issues brought on by this rampant virus. A sense of the welfare and true means of our people. A keen thirst for justice and righteousness. Confidence in what is good and fitting. The ability to work together in harmony throughout these stressful times, and bring personal peace to all of our lives and joy in our pasts. We pray for the agenda set before us tonight. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit all of those who work and live in and around our beloved city of Bastrop. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You may all be seated. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ennis. That was a wonderful prayer. All right, Council, we're moving on to Item 4A, and that is the Mayor's Report, and it's going to be a very different report tonight, as you can imagine. We have two different items where we'll talk extensively about the COVID virus and the our response to it, so I'm going to talk fairly generally about some topics first. With respect to the virus, unfortunately, Chief Nagy will be the first to agree with me that it's very sad, but in these stressful times, there are folks who are promising a cure in a $4.98 box. They are scamming our most vulnerable citizens. There are stories of ransomware, where people are sending an email about the virus, and you click on it, they take over your computer, and you have to pay ransomware. Now, more than ever, if you do not recognize the person who sent the email, hit Delete. Just hit Delete. Be very cautious, and reach out to your loved ones, and make sure that they too are being cautious. Be aware of fraudulent, if it is sounding and looking too good to be true. If anybody thinks they can get a cure for $4.98, that just, it's snake oil, and we just need to all be vigilant with that. So I have a couple of fun items before we go to the other, the rest of my Mayor's Report, because in these times, it's given all of us a chance to reflect on what's really important in this world. The last time we were all together, it was March 10th. I think we were all fairly pleased, because we left council chambers just a little bit after 8:00. And for most of us, that was about all we needed to do that night. For one of our employees, having not had a full enough day, they went home and delivered their own baby. And that was Colin. He delivered his daughter. Her name is Ella Josephine. She is gorgeous, and I'm told is eating and sleeping. Is that correct, Colin?
(inaudible).
So, what I have, I learned from our fire department, that if you are in the fire department, and you deliver your first baby, you get a stork pin. So I have a stork pin for Colin, that I will not hug him, and we will experience social distancing, but I wanted you guys to know that we were going to give him a stork pin. And let's have a round of applause for a healthy baby and Colin. Not, not, not a lot of people can say they've done that in the last two weeks, Mr. Guerin. We just wish her nothing but the very best to you and your entire family. If it was a regular meeting in regular time, which it certainly is not, I would be reading four different proclamations. I'd like to just tell you what the names are, because they're important items, and I want to make you aware of them. It is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And unfortunately, with the schools closed, just like we see in summer, often, we see a rise in child abuse. So it is really imperative that we say, say some extra prayers, take some extra actions, but be aware that it is Child Abuse Prevention Month. It is also National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It is also National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Trust me, the people who are answering 911 over these last two weeks, and will continue to work over the next few weeks, are doing phenomenal, phenomenal amount of work. So, at the appropriate time, we will give them our thanks, but it is their special week. And it is also National Fair Housing Month. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. In our audience tonight, we have a special guest, and that is our interim city manager, Robert Wood, is in the audience with us tonight to be getting up to speed, and he will start on Monday morning, is the, is the plan. So, Council has met him. We would all be shaking hands, but we're not, and we appreciate Robert making the drive, and welcome to the team. Let's have a round of applause for Mr. Wood. Some of you, today at my house, the census envelope arrived, and if you go to the census, you can answer it online. A lot of you are home. You can take time to fill it out and mail it. You can Google it. There's going to be signs in people's yards, but just, they are extending some of the dates, but they, we are still required by the Constitution to do the census, so we'll be working on that. I also wanted to give a special thanks to David Unick. Bastrop has earned, once again, the Tree City USA recognition, and David and his team and our Parks Department do a great job, so I just wanted to call that out. With that, we can go to the next page, and I want to tell you that February 27th feels like 437 life years ago. But these are the things that I did between February 27th and March 18th. The reason I chose to show this is that was, if you think about it, even with 29 days in February, those were all the things I did in a 20-day period. And if you go to the next page, that's what I've been doing since March 18th. And if you go to the following page, that's all I'm planning on doing between now and April 14th. Events are canceled, meetings are canceled. I have been in this building or in my house. I think it's important, and I wanted to make that stark contrast, it's not that I don't care about all the citizens, it's because I care about all the citizens that I am not going out socially, and I know that all of our council members are being disciplined about social distance. That concludes my Mayor's Report. Councilmember Jackson, do you have anything you would like to share with us?
Well, I just wanted to thank all the citizens that have been calling and asking for information about this coronavirus, and I've advised them to go to our website, and to also go to the different sources that we have in our community, and I'm just wanting to let them know that just be patient, we, we will all, we're Bastropians, we'll get through this. This is very important that we do the distancing that's, you know, the social distancing that is very important for us, and the more that we do, the quicker we'll get out of this. So, that's all I basically wanted to say, is that I'm praying for everyone, and I hope that you're praying for me as well as, as we go through this epidemic at this time.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Peterson?
And one last, one last thing, though, I'm sorry. I did want to say thanks to our staff at City Hall for, you know, continuing to work and get all these things taken care of for our citizens, and especially to the IT people who set this up for us so that we could practice our social distancing. I really do appreciate this. It shows that we have a very tech-savvy city, and a very concerned citizenship, and Council and staff as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Peterson, anything you'd like to share tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I just, you know, I want to say that Councilmember Jackson is reading my mind, because that's exactly what I was going to say, because between you yourself, Mayor, and the IT Department, and everybody came together to get this video together, just to share a little story with you today. I, I wanted to visit my heart doctor on telecom today, and they couldn't get set up, so we ended up finishing up our business, you know, on the telephone. So, kudos to you and your staff, that did an excellent job. Thank y'all very much, and everybody stays, stays safe and healthy.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Councilmember Ennis, do you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
The one thing I'd like to say is to recognize our mayor for the countless amount of work that has gone into meeting with the emergency group, with Judge Poppy's chairmanship, and all the work she's done. It's been a 24/7 for the last two to three weeks, four weeks, and I hope every citizen that hears this, in some way, appreciates her as much as we do.
Thank you very, very much. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yeah, real quick, during this unprecedented and oftentimes uncertain time, there are a group of people who are maintaining essential goods and services, and I just want to ask everybody to join with me in establishing an attitude of gratitude during this trying time. I think it'd be very helpful for us to address this thing collectively.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Rogers?
I just want to notice, everyone should notice, that I only missed one meeting compared to all the meetings you've gone to. And I always have fun when you're with me, so I appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you. On top of what everybody else has already said, everything. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. All right, Council, we're moving on to four, Item 4C. City Manager, City Manager Job, do you have anything to report with us?
No, ma'am.
All right. Work session briefing. We are moving to the top of Page 2, Item 5A. Receive presentation and hold discussion on changes to the B-3 Code Technical Manual and other future updates. Ms. Bills?
Good job. Try to, try to move that without touching it. Good evening. So what I'm here to talk about tonight are some updates that staff has identified to our Bastrop Building Block Code, which is, we refer to as the B-3 Code. The B-3 Code is made up of two substantive parts. One is the actual, what we refer to as the B-3 Code, which has our subdivision, our place type standards, our development patterns. It really shows you the intent and how to put together development in Bastrop. The B-3 Technical Manual has a lot more of the specifications and processes that go into putting together the subdivision documents, putting together zoning, standards, all those things. And there's two other parts of these, of these documents. One is the Development Manual, which that has our checklist, and has our actual applications that people will fill out and turn into staff. It helps them put together everything in an orderly manner when they're turning in new projects. And then there's also the Authentic Bastrop Pattern Book, which is a guideline for most of town, but in the Iredale Historic District is also a mandatory document for certain standards, for new, new or reconstructed housing and commercial developments. So, tonight specifically, what we wanted to talk about was the B-3 Technical Manual. While doing, there are several things that we need to do to make sure all of our plans outside of the B-3 Codes are compatible, and all reference the same standards and vision. Specifically, in the Technical Manual, there's two tables that are called the Development Application Approval Process and Notification Requirements. So what this does is summarizes, and also to remove redundancies within the code, and formatting and grammar that we've identified as we've been going through. What the Development Application Approval Process table does is it lists all of our processes that are in either the B-3 Code or other parts of our codes. Chapter 3 of our municipal code deals with buildings, building permits, floodplain, those kind of processes. And, and then we also adopted the grandfathering resolution or ordinance before the B-3 Codes were adopted, which is codified in a different part of the code. All of those should be in one table that shows who's the final approval authority, and who's the appeal authority to those specific elements. One of the things that we've noticed is that the grandfathering development status process and the floodplain variance were left out. They were parts of the code that were pre-existing in the B-3, they just didn't get properly referenced into the table. Additionally, there's a couple of processes that were outside of the B-3 Code that didn't get reflected properly. So where floodplain variance has actually come straight to city council, and that's actually a FEMA requirement. So, we need to make sure those are in the code and referenced properly. The other thing that got in the code that wasn't, there was a lot of discussion about how much notification we should do on different processes, and I think this one got, I think we replicated the zoning process notification for the comprehensive plan notification. So there's some notification requirements that go above and beyond what the local government code requires, and above and beyond what our own charter requires as well. The two main things for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, it requires a lot of notification that will affect our ability to do updates to the Future Laniers Plan and the Transportation Master Plan, which are two maps that we actually do need to update soon. The challenges of the increased notification is cost and staff time. So, we pulled some data when we were looking at it. When we did the place type notification for the entire city limits, that was approximately 9.4 square miles, and we sent out almost 5,000 individual notices. When you add the city limits and the entire extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is what's included in our comprehensive plan, that would be 30 square miles, so you'd have more than triple potentially the amount of notifications that you'd have to, staff would have to put together, and we'd have to pay postage on. And again, this is not a requirement that's required in the local government code. As your comprehensive plan is a guiding document, it's not a regulatory document. Your zoning and your place type and your subdivision codes, those are your regulatory documents, and those are notified when we change those. So, one of the changes we would like to do is reduce the mailed notice, not, to not include mailed notice, and not to do posted notice. Posted notice means putting signs out, 30 square miles, where would we put them? We may anger some people if we don't put them in the right places. It's, it's hard to identify. One option maybe is if it's someone's specifically requesting a change, that it's a, a specific applicant-initiated process, that maybe we notify for those, rather than when it's a city-initiated process. That may be an option we could look at, when people are, a specific property owner's affecting a change, rather than a wholesale change of the whole plan. For redundancies, some of the information that's in the Technical Manual is duplicated in the Development Manual. We already notify, noticed that with the site plan checklist that we brought back a couple weeks, months ago. We're already four months into the new code. It's kind of daunting to think that we're, we're getting through it. There's, as an example, one of the things that's redundant is we talk about how to issue and the requirements for a certificate of occupancy. That information's also included in Chapter 3, as that is done during the building process and inspection process. So we need, we need it in one place or the other, and for the other document to refer. So we need to clarify where that should be in the code. That's, so we can reduce the conflicting. And this is what we were trying to get away from, is having things in multiple spots so that we didn't get them updated together. The last thing is just some formatting and grammar. I think we had spell check corrected things for us that we didn't mean to, like, one of our examples that we noticed is site triangle, which is on the site, but it's actually a site triangle, because it's your site distance, that's to make sure nothing's in your line of sight. So just basic things that we noticed when we're reading through.
Councilmember Jackson, that site triangle, that, I'm having a feeling that has to do with your monument signs in your car. So I know Councilmember Jackson's glad that they'll be, making sure we're using the right words on that one.
Thank you very much.
Staff, so as, as we've been working through the last four months, we're starting to notice a few other things, talking to applicants, talking to developers, different things that we just didn't necessarily take into consideration, or things that don't work in some parts of town. The first one that I think we'll probably come back with sooner is the sign code. There, there were some significant changes from our previous sign code to our new sign code that we may want to revisit and have a deeper discussion on at the council level. Also, some B-3 Code reference cleanup. There's a lot of references that, to outside codes that didn't get referenced, or just didn't get dropped in properly. Also, our pedestrian shed implementation. There is a map in the, in the code that refers to the pedestrian shed, that locks you into the, the map that's in the code. And working with several applicants, I think we need to, to figure out a slightly better way of implementing that on a case, on a development-by-development basis. And then also fence standards. We don't actually have any in most of the code, so it's just something that, as people started to come in with requests for putting potentially six-foot fences in their front yard, have that discussion on, did we actually intend that, or how, how was that actually envisioned with the code? So there's, there's some things staff has kind of been looking at. We also have questions of y'all. You guys are the ones that hear from everyone, probably before we do. Have you heard anything specific that you'd like to direct staff to look at, in any parts of the code that have been adopted?
Councilmember Ennis?
My light was on for a question, so to answer your question, no.
Anybody else hearing any requests, and then we'll cut, we'll circle back around for, one, one question that I got that, and I think that you're already aware of, is in the Iredale overlay, we didn't exempt the industrial park?
Yes.
And so, for me, that's a sooner rather than later, because we are going to come back out of this, and I am going to be able to tell Council that we're selling property over there, and we don't, that's not a good time to start playing with that, so I'd like to get that cleaned up. Councilmember Ennis, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. And this may be a question for the city manager. Since we're making changes to the B-3, are these changes that need to be run by the father of this project, Mr. Lewis, for any kind of, I, I, one, the reason I'm saying that is, we instituted the B-3 Code, and one of the reasons was we had such an antiquated, antiquated code, and it'd been pasted on and torn apart and put back together so many times. And I see that all these things need to be done, but I also don't want to get, get in a, in a habit of pasting and watering down the project that we worked on.
I'll take it first, and then Trey can add on. At, at this level, a lot of these are more process-oriented, and how the city is going to manage these long-term
Implementation.
And, and implementation. And then, some, some of them are more community values. The signs are a very, that's one that everyone has a lot of opinions on, and cities just have to decide what they want and that. And also fences, that's another one that every city's code is specific to the population on what the values are. And there definitely are intent statements that I think will help us decide those. I would say maybe the pedestrian shed map, that may be something we might want to pull Mr. Lewis in on, because that's a larger piece of the actual B-3 Code. So I think the things that change, maybe some of the intent or the actual kind of building blocks of it, we may need to go back for, but this, things we're proposing at this time, I think are appropriately done at the staff level.
Mr. Job, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I would absolutely agree. Just for example, we, we received a application for a fence at the DRC just this week, and it's, it's at a house on Pecan Street. And if you go back and look at the manual, it gives you certain layers of where the fence has to start and where the fence has to stop, but it's a pre-existing house. So those are the kind of things that we made a decision that meets the intent of the code, but we would have started the fence 10 foot behind the facade of his house, which is not what the intent of the code was, because the house would have been, if it were new, closer to the road by 20 feet. So that's the kind of stuff that we're just cleaning up as staff and, and meandering through. And the great thing about the code being so flexible, is it's flexible, and the bad thing is, is it's flexible. So, so we're working our way through it, but so far, it seems to be working pretty smoothly, and we've found minor changes. And anything that we need some serious intent or interpretation on, we have a contract with Mr. Lewis.
That'd make me more comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ennis, Mayor Protem Nelson?
Not really a question, but a kind of a cautionary notice, is, and I recognize the need to, to decrease costs, unnecessary costs, and also not take away too much from staff time. I understand the notification process will comply with the letter of the law, at least the practice of it, but I don't want to lose sight of the spirit of our open communication policy that we, that this council has set, to ensure that we optimize public announcements and public pronouncements to the greatest extent possible.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Nelson. I, we, it, it's always a balance, right? Because you get a notice, and you're like, I could care less, that's seven miles from me, I don't even know what you're talking about, and if we overwhelm them, then they don't read the important stuff we want them to read. So it, to, I think to everybody's point, there, there's definitely a spirit. So I, I appreciate that. We don't want to let the pendulum swing so far the other way that we're, that we're not sharing with our. I have two, one question and one statement. On the, just for clarification, for example, the existing house, the way the code is currently written, staff may not be able to say, yes, it's an existing house, and you can put it back. The way it's currently written right now, they could come to council, and council could say, yes, you can put the fence back the way it was, because it's an existing house, and then you guys may modify the code to where they wouldn't have to come to council if council gave you the direction of, within these parameters, you can now say yes to this as well. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct. Yes, and there's a minimum amount of changes that can be made at a staff level. It's done with a warrant, and it's generally a certain percentage or a range, but the majority of anything that does not fit the code has to come back to council.
Okay. And then, I had a question, and it went far, far away. I'll, I'll may think of it. Oh, tonight, this is a work session and briefing, and Council, I'm sure, I don't think I'm speaking out of line, that, have you already visited with planning and zoning about this?
No, we have not. So we just wanted to get direction, policy direction from y'all on making, going forward with some changes, and then starting that process with planning and zoning.
Okay, because I would, I would add that not only do we want Mr. Lewis to do a sanity check over it, but we certainly want to vet and utilize our outstanding Planning and Zoning Commission before we would start voting on something, correct, Council?
Absolutely right.
So does anybody, just, does, is anybody upset with the direction that Ms. Bills spoke about? Mr. Peterson or Councilmember Jackson, do either one of you have any concerns about what you've heard tonight?
No, not at all, because we knew from the beginning, we're going to have to tweak this thing a little bit before we finally get it right.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Jackson?
I concur.
Okay. All right, well, it sounds like we're all on the same page, and any further directions for Ms. Bills? Ms. Bills, if it's all right with your city manager, I think it's all right with Council if you go home and reduce the number of people in this room, because we know you've been working hard. Thank you very much. Council, we're moving on to Item 6A. Receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending February 29th, 2020. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Colin, Ms. Bills?
Technical difficulties.
Oh, she got it, nevermind. Go ahead, Ms. Waldron. She was going to turn off the TV on you. She was going to turn off the TV on you, Tracy.
I know, right? So, it can be a quick report, but not that quick. All right. So, we are talking about the end of February and as you notice, at a glance, we are doing pretty well and I'll highlight the two warnings that are on there later on in the reports. The economic indicators are about the same as they were last month. Statewide are down, but the national in the U.S. are both up. On the revenue side, the hot tax fund is a little less than forecasted. It's in a warning category and then our cemetery has not sold as many lots as we forecasted. So, we're continuing to watch that. On the expense side, every fund is in the positive. General fund overall is almost at a 4% net positive and sales tax is up 4% actual to forecasted through this period. Property tax is a little bit in a warning category, but as I've said before historically, and I mean like a long time historically, we have always been around 99% collection. So, I'm not too worried about that. That'll catch up over the next few months. Water and wastewater fund overall is a 12% net positive and the revenue is almost 6.5% actual over forecast. Electric fund is a little over 4% net positive as a fund whole and the revenue is a little under 2% actual to forecasted. The hot tax fund is positive as a whole. Its revenue is running about 3.3% behind forecasted and we know that there's some renovations and going forward, we'll keep an eye on this particular fund. The legal at a glance and if you have any questions for me, I'd happy to entertain any of those.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. It's, we're in a very different world for next month's closure as well, but I appreciate this was the snapshot for February. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Waldron? Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Council, we're moving on to citizen comments. Our deadline is 5:00 PM and we had two people that submitted citizen's comments and asked that they be, the comments be read into the record and I want to thank both of these citizens for utilizing this methodology to keep down the number of people that are in the room and to practice social distancing and I'm fairly certain they are watching us online now. The first person who turned in their information only gave us a first name, but they did give us the address of 218 Wildcat Drive and the comment was, "When will an order of shelter in place be given?" We know with citizen comments, we don't interact with that, but I will be addressing that when we go to the emergency order. The second citizen comment that we got was from Christopher McEwen residing at 601 Chestnut Street, Suite D, Bastrop, Texas. I gotta make this big enough for me to read and small enough to see the whole thing. Hello, Bastrop City Councilmembers. We are Tough Cookie Bakery, a small mom and pop shop over in the crossings next to neighbor's kitchen. We are eight hardworking and dedicated coworkers trying to keep serving community while providing for our families as well during the time of this national crisis. We've elected to keep our doors open and rapidly shift our business model to account for the growing demand for basic staples like bread and prepared meals. The fact of the matter is we operate on a shoestring and even with scrambling to move to takeout and delivery, business is likely to be down by 60 to 80% for this foreseeable future. We are not the only ones either. All locally owned restaurants in Bastrop are in danger of closing permanently and everyone that has kept their doors open is struggling. There are countless service workers, friends of ours, and the people who serve our community who are in dire straits right now that you might have no idea how day to day they are surviving. Restaurant owners are in communication with each other about how we can help each other, but we are still going to need as much assistance that the city of Bastrop can provide. This help could come in the form of the following. Number one, implement reimbursements for landlords and business owners so that they may provide relief to tenants and eliminate evictions for the next three months. Number two, postpone, discount, or eliminate utility payments during the duration of the pandemic. Number three, postpone property tax and business tax payments. Number four, fast track any grants through Bastrop EDC or other channels. Also, having learned a thing or two from the fires in 2011, there are a lot of people who will be looking for jobs and need access to Wi-Fi and basic services. The library is closed, but could they get some sort of public Wi-Fi location? If this continues, the food pantry alone will not be able to support the community. Please do not close the farmer's market unless absolutely necessary as it is a source for food, just like HEB. Thanks for taking the time to listen. We trust you. Sincerely, Chris and Jenny McEwen, Victoria Oxnard, Carolyn Urzua, Lori Woodworth, Audrey Stewart, Laney Mellon, and Juliana Murray, Tough Cookie Bakery. Want to thank both of these citizens for sending in their comments, appreciate the suggestions and we'll be talking about as much of this as we can, but it is a part of the record and we'll be addressing it moving forward. Council, we're now at the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. Does anybody want an item pulled? Councilmember Jackson or Peterson, do you want an item pulled from the consent agenda?
No.
Council here, anyone? All right. I'm going to read them. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council meeting minutes from the March 10, 2020 regular meeting, March 13, 2020 special called meeting, and March 16, special called meeting and emergency meetings. Item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance 2020-06 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2020 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance 2020-05 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Article 13.02, water and wastewater rates and charges, Section 13.02.002, wastewater service charge, 13.02.004, water service charges, and 13.02.008, billing discontinuance of service, amending Appendix A fee schedule, Article A 13.02, water and wastewater rates and charges, Sections A 13.02.002, wastewater service charge, and A 13.02.004, water service charge as attached in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, enactment, repealer, severability, providing for an effective date, codification, proper notice, and meeting. Happy to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis and I'm going to give the second to Councilmember Peterson. I think it was the time delay. So, I've got a motion and a second. City manager, if you'll call the roll. You're doing that tonight.
Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Peterson?
You can, we'll do better on the next one. You're fine.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
The bottom line is it was unanimous and the consent agenda is approved. All right, council, we're moving on to page three, which quite frankly is our only page and we have five items to consider. I think the first item is the one that may take a little bit of time and may answer one of the citizen comments as a part of it. If you will think back, and it's all happened quite quickly, on March 13, the governor declared an emergency in the state of Texas. On Monday, March 16, you guys as a part of the Monday meeting confirmed the emergency declaration that I had signed on the 16th of March. So, we have an emergency declaration and it has been confirmed. Over the next few days, with Alan's help, thank you very much, and Alan's also going to keep me out of trouble as we're moving forward tonight, we did, I signed an emergency order of the mayor, number one, which limited social gatherings to 50 people and it defined social gatherings. So, that was the first emergency order. The second emergency order that I signed, and I signed it the very next day because at noon that day, at 9 o'clock that morning, the public health official encouraged us to go to 10. At noon that day, the governor announced that by midnight of the following day, the number would be 10. I had called Alan that morning and said, well, we did so well with 50, how do you feel about 10? He agreed that he liked the number 10, so that's how we got emergency order number two. So, those are the two that have been signed so far. You had sent to you tonight, emergency order number three and emergency order number four. We are going to talk about those tonight because I have not signed either one of them. My goal would be that I sign them tonight and then through the resolu, nope, that's not true, through the emergency ordinance, which Alan also sent you, and thank you, Ms. Franklin, our city secretary, that emergency ordinance number is going to be 2020-08. So, if someone was inclined to make a motion, you would be approving ordinance 2020-08. By the letter of the law, it is my understanding, since you guys confirmed the emergency declaration, I can sign emergency orders. I don't like to be out on a limb by myself. We make decisions as a team and our intention is every time we meet, if there has been a situation that has required me to do an emergency order, that you guys would confirm that so that we are all on the same page and when we get calls from citizens, we're all singing off the same sheet of music. I'll go ahead and use that analogy. Before, so you will always see during this COVID crisis, when we meet, the first item for individual consideration is always going to be an ordinance that says, these are the emergency orders that have been signed. If we haven't signed any, then we won't have anything to approve. But just the process of that, does that make sense? Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Peterson, everybody on the same page?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I want to step back from that real quickly and say that on Monday at 4:00 PM on March 16 was the first time in history that county, the city of Bastrop, the city of Smithville, and the city of Elgin, all four entities declared an emergency all at the same time. The way this works is when the president does something, the governors follow that and they can do something stricter if they choose to do that. Once the governor does something, we, counties and cities must follow that, but we can do something that is more strict. Once the county does something, when Judge Poppy says, all right, I'm going to do this rule, let's just say for example, he, well, that's a good example because once, once the governor went to 10, Paul automatically has to go to 10 because we all roll up the umbrella. If the judge makes a decision and he has things in the unincorporated areas of the county that we might need to make a decision inside our municipality that is just not pertinent to him. So, each city still has their jurisdiction. We have to comply with the county, but we can make decisions specific to our jurisdiction as long as they don't conflict. Did I explain that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Yep.
So, what you have before you is emergency order three and it is going to talk about, actually for practicality, I'd like to talk about emergency order number four first because when we went from 50 to 10, the other thing that the governor did that we must comply with, and that was on premises consumption of food or beverages at restaurants and bars is prohibited. We heard the governor say, you can't, we're closing bars and restaurants, it has to be pickup, takeout, that delivery, that sort of thing. We also saw him do some things he's never done before because I, in my lifetime, you've never been able to have a margarita delivered to your house, but you can now do that. And now that the governor has said you can do that, you can do that in our city as well. But when we went from 50 to 10, because Alan wrote the order prior to the press release, we didn't include about restaurants and bars. The other thing that is in the emergency order number four is clarifying, and I would draw your attention to page two, Section 8, exceptions, and it discusses that if, basically whether you are exempt, whether you're an essential service, if you are a business that is functioning, you are required to follow social distancing. You need to make efforts to follow social distancing. I've heard blue tape on the floor, I've heard baskets between, people are doing it all different ways and we, unless council, you want us to do something different, we have not said that we are going to strictly enforce exactly how they have to comply. We are just saying, if you are going to be open for business, you must comply with social distancing. So, that is why it is item, it's an emergency order number four. At one point, Alan and I talked about making it item 2A. It's, the number's 10 and we're closing bars and restaurants, but because we're wanting to be so specific about the social distancing, he thought it was better to have paperwork that called that out separately. Then going backwards to emergency order number three, Mr. Jobe, as our acting city manager, when I sent out the first emergency order saying that social gatherings should be limited to 50, Mr. Jobe also sent to you a letter, operationally, the changes that he was making to city facilities as a part of his operations. It is on the advice of Alan because it included things like closing public buildings that we codify that, is that the right word?
Yes, ma'am.
And not just have that be a letter that you guys had received from Trey, but that we are very transparent to our community what we're doing and why we are doing it. So, when you look at item, emergency order number three, that is dated March 24, 2020, that Alan sent you a few hours ago, and if we need to print out and make copies, I know we've got some folks that would help us do that. One of the items that I specifically want to have a conversation about, and Mr. Jobe, I may get you to jump in on this, is that from the public health authority, from Mr. Jobe as our city manager, from staff, and my opinion as a mayor, and that is that when we are closing city facilities, that that includes parks and sports fields. Is there anything you want to add, Mr. Jobe, on that topic?
No, I would agree. Operationally, just like you said, I don't want to make a decision in a vacuum. This is important. But what we've done, we've actually gone to a level two and I know that doesn't mean a lot to you if you don't sit here at the daily meetings and hear about epidemics and pandemic, but we're at a level two for emergency management, readiest level for the city as a whole. That, and what I've done at this time is deem all the employees essential, right? So, that again gives us the ability to come to work because not all of us have the role. While you may be a librarian by day, you may also run a shelter by night. So, we're such a small group of people that we're all essential. We're all going to continue to come to work, but the resources is what are stretched. So, for us to clean surfaces at parks, for example, the slides, the playgrounds, the bathrooms, supplies are slowly limiting as toilet paper and hand sanitizers and soaps and stuff are not traveling. Our orders are all being reallocated to medical facilities. So, that stuff is trickling in, but we won't be able to maintain service at certain things. It doesn't mean people won't be here working, it just means they may not be doing their everyday job. So, at a staff and operational level, it would absolutely behoove us to do that. It gives good social distancing practices. It meets the governor's intent, I believe, and it also helps us out operationally since it's really important that supplies that we have last as long as they can. And right now, I think we're about three weeks out, specific just for what we clean buildings with. If I can take the slides from the convention center, I can take the supplies from the parks department, I can probably stretches a little bit farther to continue those essential services and essential functions, which are making sure the water runs, making sure the toilets flush, making sure the power and the light stays on, collecting revenue, that's also an essential service whether we don't think about it or not. And some of the policy discussions that we're going to have to have tonight is how we continue to do that because we're going to definitely take a hit on our sales tax. If you remember, that's 72, 42% of our budget. The hotel occupancy tax, they've been hit harder than probably. The hotel occupancy tax, they've been hit harder than probably any other industry. So there's going to be-- that's the kind of policy discussion we're going to be guidance on, and we'll move operationally, once we get direction from you, to make sure we can do that. Does that help?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. While he's talking about the stretching of our resources, and we will come back and have a conversation about parks, I would really be remiss if I did not give just tremendous kudos to Chief Rosales, to city manager Jobe, and Tanya Cantrell is functioning as the joint information center's PIO. So for our joint emergency operations center, Tanya is no longer the HR director for the city of Bastrop, she is running the entire joint information center. They have all worked tremendous hours and really pulling the message together for the entire county. Rebecca Gleason is serving as the PIO for the city of Bastrop. She and Colin and her team have done graphics that have been so wonderful, they've been adopted by everybody else in the county. There's a lot of work going on trying to make sure that communication is consistent, that it's timely, that it's clear, and it's concise, but they had full-time jobs. So Trey and I have spent more time together in the last week than ever, and we're constantly having to be flexible. How do we move people? How do we get done critical items? So that's part of the balancing act that we're doing. And the equipment and supplies that he's talking about, if you think about, we're sending city employees to go clean a restroom, empty trash with the general public, there is a certain amount of PPE, personal protective equipment, that they've got to use to do that job safely, and two months from now, I don't want us to be wishing we had had the PPE we were using to clean a bathroom, because we've got medical people that are out of that personal protective equipment. I also personally think that as much as some citizens do not like the government, some of us don't like big government, some of us are mad at the world, some of us are not mad at anybody, there is an implied foundation to our society that says, if the government has that open, it's safe. And the facts are, that coronavirus on playground equipment lives somewhere between two hours and nine days, and nobody knows the answer to that. And I believe if we leave the parks open, we are unintentionally telling folks, it's safe to come play on our playscape. And I personally am not confident that that's the answer. So I've talked a lot. If you don't mind, I would like us to talk about emergency order number three first and see if anybody's got any issues with closing the parks or any of the things that's described in this two-page. Councilmember Ennis.
When you say close the parks, does that include people just walking through the parks?
So the letter of the law answer is yes. The reality is Chief Nagy does not have enough people to put somebody on a bike and ride every one of our trails. What this order would allow is if there are a group of kids playing basketball that have all been sheltering at home, who come together, mix their germs, and then go back to houses, it allows Chief Nagy and his staff to do a little toot-toot on the horn and say, you guys need to break it up. I don't think we beat people into submission, but I've got some parents who have called and said, it would be really helpful if I could just tell the kids, the park's closed. That's why we're not going to the playscape today. So I'm trying to answer your question without answering your question. How did I do?
I'll jump in whenever I can.
Yes, yes, sir. Let's let councilmember Ennis finish, and I'll go straight to you, Doc.
I can understand it, but I'm not sure if it's going to be understood, that answer.
Councilmember Jackson?
Right. As you know, I'm the park liaison, even though I haven't talked with the parks department here about this, but this is what's happening across the state with other parks. They are, because of the safety features that, you know, even walking in the parks, you know, touching the different playground equipment or the rails and things like that could endanger some of our citizens in the future. So they are choosing to not allow people to use the parks in that instance because of that. It's unfortunate that it's a situation, but it's for safety and the social distancing, even though they may not be together, it's something that we need to consider, and we just need to limit the use of the park or prohibit it at this time, as far as I'm concerned. And that's what other cities are doing.
Thank you, councilmember Jackson. Thank you for bringing that up. On March 23rd, which was just yesterday, the LCR A closed all of their parks.
Right, exactly.
The state parks have closed their headquarters, their visitor centers, they're wanting you to pay online, they're trying to stop the interaction. It's honestly, it's a great time to ride a bike, walk down the street with your kids, because you'll notice there's not as many cars driving. So-- and it was also interesting that the governor said, get out and enjoy the parks, and then the state parks started closing, because there's a practical application of how much folks can say grace over these days.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson, did you have any comments on the parks?
Yes. These are things that we have to do to keep everybody safe, and I know we can't, we don't have the resources, like some of the larger cities, to go around spraying each individual park. So we just have to do what we have to do at the time, just have to close the parks down. Sorry, it has to be done.
Council, any other questions? Comments?
I want to make it clear that I do not-- I'm supportive of this emergency order, closing the parks. I'm just concerned that it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of confusion about it. And I think we need to define what that means.
City attorney?
Mayor, what I'll say, councilman Ennis, is as worded, this executive order, this emergency order, closes public access to all city of Bastrop parks. Ballfields, basketball courts, walking trails, pavilions, bathrooms, the entire thing is off limits.
Public access is the lynch word that I'm looking for. Okay. And I just want to make sure that our folks that are watching at home understand that clarification.
Yes. And because of all the reasons stated, our inability to dedicate resources to maintaining, management, policing, if this is approved by the mayor and then later confirmed by the council, what we're asking is for people to find alternate ways to get some fresh air and exercise for this temporary period of time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, city attorney. Thank you, councilmember Ennis. Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yeah, it's one of our mandates as a council to do everything we can to preserve the peace, health, and safety and welfare of our citizens. So this is, in this uncertain time, this is the right thing to do.
Councilor Rogers?
Well, I agree with everything said. It is, I mean, it's a hard decision, but sometimes those are-- but we've got to do what's best for them and everybody out there.
Thank you very much. City attorney, do you-- should I-- should we take a vote on this emergency order, or should we set that one aside and do it with the ordinance, which would be approving one through four?
At some point prior to getting to the ordinance, mayor, I would want you, as mayor, to approve the emergency order, because the way state law is set out, it is you that has the authority to make emergency orders, and once you have done that, then we can ask the city council to consider the ordinance that ratifies and consents to your emergency orders.
Thank you, city attorney.
And you can do that from the dais.
And I'm getting ready to. City council, based on your input, I, as mayor, am approving and signing emergency order number 2020-3 dated March 24th, 2020. All right, council, we're now going to talk about emergency order number four. This one has the closing of the onsite restaurant and bars, no dining in, and it also has that the businesses that stay open need to follow the social distancing. Is there any questions? This one's a little more straightforward. Go ahead, Mr. Jobe.
I just wanted to mention, to answer some of the questions that were brought up in the citizens' comments. Actually, Ms. Gleason and her team has been working with everybody in the downtown area. We've set up four pods that'll go out tomorrow for curbside service. They're dedicating a webpage that will have all of the restaurants for downtown, where you can click on their menu, you can order, you can-- so we're doing everything we can, as a city, to help make sure they're successful. And we're going to continue to look for those after. I know we've had discussions with Cameron about working on the small business loans. He's also looking for a way to fill in the gaps. So if the federal doesn't cover it and the states doesn't cover it, he's looking for the gap that fits the local needs to be successful, to make sure these guys are going to continue to flourish the best we can. As we continue, we'll keep looking for that any way we can.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for clarifying that. I will also share with council that Roberta Barrejo, who owns Anita's, called me about 10 minutes before I left for council, and she was very excited, because she was interviewed to be on TV, and she said, they asked her, well, how are you getting through? And she said, if anybody on my staff wants to work, we're open. They've put tables at the front door, and they-- so that you can, you can't get into the restaurant, but they're stacked to the point that they can take an order, and she can pass with social distancing, provide food to people. And I know we have some fantastic restaurants on Main Street, and Anita's is just one of them. And she told me that the reporter said, well, Ms. Barrejo, you seem kind of upbeat. And she said, you know what? We're going to come back stronger than we were. And that kind of optimism and attitude is just phenomenal. And yes, my husband and I will be eating enchiladas from Anita's tomorrow. And they have gone back to their old hours, and she is open from 7:00 to 2:00. One of the most heartwarming stories she told me was that she and Papa's and Old Town are buying food from each other and doing what they can to help each other, and I think that is exactly what our citizen comment was. We have a fabulous downtown, we want them to be successful, and we can do that. Mr. Jobe's pointed out some of the excellent work Ms. Gleason's done, where folks can still enjoy food and do what we can to help our restaurants. So council, with no one's objection, with the power of the emergency order, my, being the mayor, I am signing and approving emergency order 2020-4 dated March 24th. With that, city attorney, I believe you are now suggesting that council consider approving ordinance 2020-08, and Exhibit A would be the four emergency orders. Am I understanding that correctly?
Very close, Mayor Schrader. What you have, council, is a standard form ordinance that I do not anticipate changing very much, meeting to meeting, but it will reappear, as the mayor indicated, in a different number, similar document, giving you the opportunity to ratify whatever emergency orders have been approved within the interim between city council meetings. And one factor that we have with the emergency orders, as they're adopted and approved by the mayor, they repeal any previous orders or conflicting ordinances, at least during the period of this disaster crisis response. And so I think we only have two at this point, don't we?
Well, the last time they talked, they only did the emergency declaration. So when I signed one and two, that was after, so they haven't confirmed one or two, so I thought we would be doing all four tonight.
We can, but in effect, three and four are going to avoid one and two.
Gotcha. Okay.
So just to avoid confusion, it's my recommendation that if you approve ordinance 2020-08, the two attachments are going to be emergency orders three and four.
Gotcha now. That makes sense to me. Councilmember Jackson and councilmember Peterson, were you able to hear city attorney? And that makes sense? It would be on this?
It does.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson, you with us?
I'm with you. I was just getting ready to say, you know, that I'm in agreement on it, and I was going to make a motion when it's time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Jobe?
Yeah, just before we vote, I just wanted to bring a couple of items up that we're going to bring to you in the future. Again, some of the decisions we made in here were operationally, we wanted to get it confirmed by council. We're going to continue to do that, and we're going to bring you back items on utility billing. Just like the, again, in the citizen request, we've already operationally talked about delaying. There's no penalties for the month of April, that kind of thing. But I want to bring those back and go on a month-by-month basis so that we can talk about that. Not necessarily that we defer payment, but you may want to extend a little bit of time and not charge penalties, and then work with those people individually as they come in. Same thing with their sales tax, same thing with their hotel occupancy tax. That is-- and what we have is some good resources from DML. We can work hard with Alan. There is guidance on all of that and how it should be done, and I'm sure that's the first thing that Mr. Wood would like to do when he gets here, is just jump right in the middle of this and figure out all these cool policy and procedural items. But just wanted to bring that up, and that's the kind of things that you'll see in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Jobe. And that emergency declaration, the emergency declaration gives me lots of power as mayor. It gives the city manager, whether it's Mr. Jobe or Mr. Wood on Monday, lots of power. But we know we don't make decisions in a vacuum, and so Mr. Jobe talked about, we've got to be able to make decisions during the emergency, but we want to have the sanity check and make sure that we're all on the same page. And I assured him as council that you would be happy to know major operational changes that he's recommending, that whenever possible, that they come to council before they're implemented. But if it comes to public health and safety, he's going to do it within the emergency declaration, and then he'll tell us that he did it. But we got to keep everybody safe. Councilmember Rogers?
I just wanted to make one clarification. Did you mention sales tax? Do you have the right to prolong sales tax?
There's actually some, it's not that we can prolong sales taxes, it's one thing to do, they may waive the penalty. So you may not pay it on time, and is it the comptroller that's already decided on that, Tracy? Yeah, there's already some guidance on that.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure you knew it was the comptroller and not us.
That's correct.
I just wanted everybody to know out there that it's not us setting on sales tax.
No, no. My point is, what I'm telling you is, we may want to follow suit with that and make people aware of it, and while we, you're right, we don't control sales tax.
I just wanted to make sure.
We do control waiving the utility bill fees, things of that nature.
She's saving you from yourself, Mr. Jobe.
Yes, thank you.
She doesn't want people showing up at her store going, but Mr. Jobe said I don't have to pay sales tax anymore.
Yes, that is not what I said.
Councilmember Jackson, councilmember Peterson, did either one of you want to say something else?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, council, I am happy to entertain a motion for item 9A.
So moved.
I have a motion from councilmember Jackson that we approve emergency order and ordinance, and even though it's an ordinance, because it's an emergency ordinance, it is a first and final reading, so you will not see it on the consent agenda at the next meeting. Emergency ordinance 2020-08. I thought Mr. Peterson seconded. Motion from councilmember Jackson and a second from councilmember Peterson. Now, Mr. Jobe, would you like to call the roll?
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
I just have to say, Ms. Franklin, we miss you, and some people will understand why.
Amen.
All right, council, we're going on to item 9B. Consider action to approve resolution number R.2020-30 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, responding to the application of CenterPoint Energy Resources Corporation South Texas Division to increase rates under the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program, suspending the effective date of this rate application for 45 days, authorizing the city to continue to participate in a coalition of cities known as the Alliance of CenterPoint Municipalities, determining the meeting at which the resolution was adopted, complied with the Texas Open Meetings Act, making sure other findings and provisions related to the subject, and declaring an effective date. Mr. Jobe, you want to give two sentences on this?
Sure. Thank you, mayor and council. This is pretty short and sweet. The, basically, the new rate has been set, and this allows us to defer it for 45 days. You can't change it, but what you can do is just push it off for a little while, and that's what we're here to vote on.
We have to do this annually, and there it is. Anybody want to make a motion?
Move for approval.
All right. I'm gonna give that motion to Councilmember Ennis because Mr. Jobe's gonna call his name first anyway, and give the second to Councilmember Jackson. Any further discussion? City Manager Jobe, would you like to call the roll, please?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
I think that was a yes from Councilmember Jackson.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We're moving on to Item 9C. Consider action to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 2020-07 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting a water conservation plan in accordance with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality and Texas Water Development Board Regulations, providing for findings of fact and actual appeal or severability, effective date and proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the April 14th, 2020, City Council consent agenda for a second reading. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is essentially something that has to be updated every five years. The last time it was done is in 2016. We're a little early on this, but the main thing to, to know about the water conservation plan, it's, it's, it's something that's required by the Texas Water Development Board, it's also required by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. And what it does is talks about how we're gonna maintain efficiency, reduce water loss, and we're also gonna increase, increasing reuse when we can. I do have a little PowerPoint, yes, thank you. Um, and again, some of it's exactly what I said. So, what the most important thing to remember is, the cheapest water that we have is what we already own, right? So, what we want to do is extend the, the water supplies by demonstrating good stewardship, and that's, that's, that's truly critical. As we know, that stuff's pretty expensive. Again, we have to comply per state law. And what we talk about here is, is accurate meeting, good records management, tracking, controlling water loss. We really want to make sure that people are following the plumbing codes, and as things retrofit, that kind of stuff, water usage will actually reduce. It's, it's going to. And we just have set some goals that are in line with the Region K. And here's some of the formulas, as you see, and I won't go over each one because I know better to read from the slide directly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jobe.
Again, what's important is water loss and, and making sure our residents are, and I cannot see the screen this time. I guess it is bad sitting down here. As you can see, some of our water conservation goals for residential are historic five-year averages of 95, and we, our goal in 10 years is to get to 93 gallons per day. Nothing, nothing crazy, we just want to make sure that our water loss continues to lower. We average around 11% now. The state average is somewhere around 15. So, we already do pretty well, but our 10-year goal is to get to 10.
So, to, to your point, the most, the cheapest water we have is the water we've already processed.
That's correct.
And to be good stewards of the earth, to keep people's water bills down, is, it's a win-win-win, that we do not waste water and that we are, take proper care of the precious commodity that it is. And this, how often are we required to approve this?
We're, we're required to approve this every five years. We also have to do the drought contingency plan. While we were updating the drought contingency plan, which I believe you adopted a few months back, we went ahead and updated this as well, and so now everything's on the same schedule.
Okay. So, once every five years, so, Councilmember Ennis, you don't have to look at this every quarter, but you have to look at it once every five years, he's happy about that. All right, council, do you, is there anybody with any questions for Mr. Jobe on this item?
Clarification.
You know?
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Mr. Jobe, but to be clear, this is not only good practice for us, but it also satisfies a regulatory compliance issue that, I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Somebody sneezed.
Oh, a regulatory compliance issue that keeps people providing additional oversight over our water program that may incur additional costs by the city.
That is absolutely correct. It, we, we do have additional requirements, and it also makes us eligible for funding with the Texas Water Development Board. So, it's just requirement to, to, to play the game, if you will.
Yes, and we want to do everything so we can apply for as many grants as we can. All right.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
And a second from Mayor Protim Nelson. Is there any further discussion or questions? City Manager, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We're moving on to Item 9D. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2020-31 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract for annual pricing agreement for ribbon curving to 304 Constructions LLC, attached as Exhibit A, priced according to the bid proposal sheet attached as Exhibit B, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for appealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This was a RFP that we did in-house a while back. If you'll remember, in your budget, we, we talked about doing the wastewater lines at the North Main project, right? So, there's some water lines on McNolia, sorry, wastewater lines on McNolia, North Main. And as we're, as we're going through there, we've actually extended, and we're about to complete that process, because of the, we actually had some additional funding that we could continue to use. So, we got that completed, we're wrapping up the water line within the next week, and now it's time to do the street, but before we do the street, we need to pour ribbon curb. It turns out that the previous RFP we did for Concrete Services had everything in it but a ribbon curb. So, we did an RFP specifically for this project, and will take care of the ribbon curbing to make sure those streets can be done this summer. That'll take any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Jobe?
I move to accept your ribbon curbing.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further questions or discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Is this budgeted?
Yes, sir, it certainly is. It is. And I noticed on this, it was not, the page number was not in this particular staff report, but all the staff that took care of it is out, and I thought it'd be nice if we continued social distancing, and I will catch that on the next. But yes, it is absolutely in the budget.
Thank you.
And it's under budget.
Thank you. Mr. Jobe, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The vote is unanimous, and the resolution is approved. We're on our final individual consideration item. Item 9E. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2020-33 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, abandoning a public utility easement at 1405 Willow Street, Bastrop, Texas, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for appealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and council. If you'll, if you'll, this is actually in your packet, it starts on page 204, I believe, it was the attachment that was added, because the backup was missed. But I also have something here on the, on the, for the PowerPoint. So, what we're doing is releasing 18 feet of a foot, a 15-foot wide PUE. And if you look at the exhibit in the packet and the one on the screen here, you can see that about 12 foot of the PUE actually encroaches into the building that's on the, at the LCR Riverside Campus. There are no utilities there. Oh, let me see, backup one. Well, yeah.
You, you can get it, go to the podium tre, oh, there you go. You got it. Whatever's easiest for you.
So, you'll see right here, it actually encroaches 12 foot into their front porch on that Riverside Compass Center. There's no utilities there. We're gonna partially abandon this piece, and it's, this is one of the conditions for the LCR A to sell this property. So, by, by partially releasing this 18-foot-long piece of 15-foot PUE, they can sell the property.
That we are not using.
That's correct, that nobody's using, yes.
So, I, I'm just saying that we're not abandoning an easement that we have a utility in.
That's absolutely correct.
We're reaping no benefit from it. It's, there's a building on top of it, so we're relinquishing it to clear up the tiles.
That's absolutely correct. Same thing we did at Firestone last year.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protim Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion or question?
I have a question.
Councilmember Rogers?
Oh, you took the picture away.
Oh, there it is.
So, we're only going back to that other green line, is that correct? Or are we relinquishing the entire red square?
Only the portion that's under the porch, so the 18-foot of the 15-foot wide.
Okay. Just want to make sure, because it's got a big square, I want to make sure everybody's heard that right now.
That's correct. It's just, it's just what is under the building is what we're releasing.
All right, thank you.
Actually, I'm, let me rephrase it, it's two foot outside the building. Yes.
All right. All right. City Manager Jobe, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and we are done with all of our individual consideration items. So, we are now going to go into executive session, and Colin, are, have we figured out how to do that? We're, we are, council is going to stay in this room. If you are watching us on Facebook Live, you are going to hear nothing, and you're going to see council is in executive session. Is that?
City seal.
A city seal. Enjoy the city seal. And council, with your permission, I would like to ask Mr. Wood to stay with us in executive session, since he'll be taking over as city manager on Monday, thought it'd be important for him to hear the conversation. And staff, thank you for being here, and please go home, take care of your families. All right, so I'm going to read the executive session items. Item 10A. City council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the acquisition of property and easements associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plan number three. And Item 10B, pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding legal matters involving declaration of local state of disaster, emergency orders, and related regulatory issues. It is 7:52, and we are in executive session. Okay, council, it is 9:03, and we are out of executive session. We're on Item Number 11. Take any necessary or appropriate actions on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session. With regard to Item 10A, I am happy to entertain a motion.[1706.42]